Gentlemen, I'd like to call the October 6th, 2025 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If everyone please rise for the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, there's Nate.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon?
Here.
Jamie Malloy?
I'm here.
Scott Dyke?
Here.
Angelo DiSario. Darrell Jefferson?
Here.
Claudia Gazal?
Here.
Tina Oberlin?
Present.
Mark Sepiti?
Here.
Nate Albert?
He's in the hallway.
Joe Kowal?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I did receive a text from Alderman DiSario. He is out of town this evening, so he is excused. You have before you the approval of the minutes from the city council meeting held on September 15th, 2025. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the September 15th, 2025 city council meeting. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
And you also have before you for approval are the minutes of the work session held on September 22nd, 2025. Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the work session minutes of September 22nd, 2025. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
abstaining right now.
Yes, for me, Chris.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
I'm abstaining.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No agenda items for me tonight, but happy to try to ask for any questions you might have.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Blaine Wing. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor. I have one item that's on the agenda and then one update. The item for tonight's discussion is the establishment of the flexible spending account with an effective date of January 1st of 2026. In your packet, starting on page 15, I put together a one-page memo outlining, acknowledging first that council has discussed this topic several times. And that information is in the memos that are behind my cover memo. But I did want to highlight a few things that, again, the session, which the flexible spending accounts are also commonly called Section 125 plans. Underneath IRS Code, Section 125, there are various different plans that are eligible. Again, there's benefits for both employer and for employees. On the employer's side, there's some savings in regards to FICA and other taxes. Something that I most want to highlight is the attraction. So for recruitment, having a Section 125 plan and also for retention of employees, it's very, very much a good thing to have. We have had a few employees since I've been here that have asked about having a Section 125 plan, either for parents or for young kids, for like daycare and that sort of services. And again, it's a overall a cost-effective benefit plan for employers. As for employees, again, there's a tax saving as it lowers their overall expenditures. So they can be setting aside money, again, for dependent care and some medical expenses pre-tax. Again, it does then also increase their take-home pay. And again, when they're looking at various kind of key expenses, having the option to have a flexible spending account for medical or dependent and managing, so kind of cash flow is another reason. So employees like it and employers like it. Overall, when we looked into it, it would be about $3,000 annually for administrative costs through our, the cooperative that we're part of for health insurance. And the rest of the money would come out of the employee's pocket. So they would be setting aside this money into their, either dependable accounts or these other flexible spending mechanisms. Happy to answer any questions. And again, my cover memo starts on page 15, and then the next couple pages. HR has talked with council in the past about this. What I'm seeking is, I'm recommending is approval tonight to let our consultants, our health benefit consultants know that we'd be able to add the Section 125 plans as part of our optional benefits, starting as of January 1st of 2026.
Any questions of the request?
So moved as presented. Is this for collectively bargain employees or all employees?
So this is specifically for non-union employees, but typically, once we have it there, when we go into union negotiations, if they're on our health benefits. So some of the unions do participate, and then some are completely separate on their own. So if it's on our plan, it's something that I would like to eventually offer. But for the union that is on their own separate one, this is not something that they would be eligible for.
Okay.
I had two questions that I didn't get out here. I had asked originally about, because if they don't spend it, they lose it.
They do.
So they have to be made well aware of that, because that can come as a shocker if people don't realize that. So, you know, I, I hope everybody's well informed of that particular item. And the other thing is, they said that if they don't use it, that the money goes back to the employer, which is us. And I had asked, where does that money go? And they were going to find out. But I, I never heard.
Oh, okay. So typically, the broker that we use is going to create a overall cost fund for us to have the flexible spending account. And our costs right now, like we've estimated, I want to say it's like $28, $2900, just under $3,000. It would go into the general account and then would actually help offset that cost in the future years. The IRS has typically extended, I think there's an extra 30 days. So we'd be making sure to continually inform employees. It's getting close. You have 30 days till you're in before there's that little extension period. But really encourage employees to take advantage. Most likely, we'd have the dependent and the, so both for a child or for the elderly would most likely be the first two that we, we offer. But once we roll out the overall plan, we'll be able to provide more specifics.
Well, we had this at Newmark, and I had it. And when it got close, if you had a lot of money, it's like going, you could, because you can buy like contact lenses and solution and things of that nature. So, you know, it's nice that they know that, so that if they have money at the end, they would spend it on things of that nature.
Yeah, definitely. Vision dental, you know, items that, like you were noting, so contact cleaner and some other things are the pre-approved eligible items.
Is there a second yet? Second?
All right, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin for approval to establish a flexible spending account, effective date of January 1st, 2026, for City of Crest Hill employees. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
I abstain.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal? Joe Kowal?
Joe?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, the second item, I just wanted to see some more of a general poll. But I talked with our professional photographer, is we're looking to get headshots of all the council and then a group photo. This would be used for our upcoming newsletter as well as our website. And I just wanted to see if we would all be able to be available at the November 3rd council meeting. The gentleman would set up photography kind of workstation in our community room behind us. And then in 10-minute increments from 5:00 until a few minutes before 7:00, I could see us all here and then taking the, the group photo. So either head and eyes that you would be here for the November 3rd. It is a council meeting, so tried to kind of put that as tight as possible. But occasionally, we've had some members note that they were not going to be available, so we've pivoted. Like tonight's a good example. So if November 3rd's good, I'd like to lock that in with our photographer.
Any problems, anybody?
And what was the time again?
Yep, between 5:00 and 7:00. And once I talk with the photographer, if that works, I'll follow up with Angelo as he's not here today. Then we'll assign a specific 10-minute time period. And then we just have each person come in, they'll take the digital photos, they'll have the background. Once I have a copy of the background, I'll share it with everybody so that you can select your outfits accordingly. So that the back, you know, you don't blend in and then it's not clashing. Again, we plan on using this for our website so that we have the same background for all of the photos as well as for our, as well.
Do we know how much this is going to cost?
The, for the total, along with the group shot, I believe he gave us the estimated price of $2,600.
Wow. For pictures, wow.
Yeah, so the normal headshots, when we looked into it, for each person, he's kind of right in the middle. And it's a local Crest Hill resident who has a business in town. When we reached out to the creator chamber, Avagolia, they gave us a list of the photographers that they've used. And when we reached out for pricing, again, like to keep the dollars in town. And, you know, his price is right in the middle of the prices.
Okay. Any questions, Blaine?
Well, I have one comment. I want to wish you a happy 50th birthday, sir. We're very thrilled you're here. And there'll be cake, as you know, afterwards, for everybody here. Cake to celebrate.
Thank you.
Happy birthday again, Blaine.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Blaine. Moving on to our Public Works Department.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. With the birthday wishes, I can't, I forgot. Can we have on the next agenda, a next work session possible, or the next couple, the IML expenses? And also, you know, we can work on the scrap trucks in Crest Hill. That's something I would like to look into, like the people that do scrapping.
Okay.
Something that we need to look into.
Food combos kind of scrapping?
No, this is like the people that collect scrap, yeah, metal scrap.
All scrap and all other materials. Okay.
Okay, moving on to Public Works Department. Julius only has one item on the agenda this evening. It is the approval of pay request number 32 from Viscerine Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $1,379,799.03. This was discussed last, at the 22nd, I believe it was, of September, the work session.
So moved as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin for the approval of pay request number 32 from Viscerine Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to the IEPA for approval and disbursement for a total amount of $1,379,799.03. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman. Good evening, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm looking for a motion to approve a resolution that'll approve an engineering design agreement for the Caton Farm Road over CN Railroad, formerly the EJ&amp;G, buying between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for an amount of $79,650.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Albert for a resolution approving an engineer-designed agreement for Caton Farm Road over the CN Railroad, formerly the EJ&amp;E Railroad, buying between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering, LTD, for an amount of $79,650. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 1347.
I just got a brief question for Ron. Ron, you mentioned in your memo that it doesn't look like there's been any work done to that bridge since it was built in 86. Were you able to find anything in the last?
Nope, there was a little bit of minor patching I saw, but that was it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Ron?
That is it.
Any questions of city engineer?
Just the sign. I know, I don't know if you handled that, because Public Works is not here. The sign on McGilvray, it's broken on the light pole.
Sign on McGilvray?
Yeah, you know how like they have those metal bands that they hold the sign, one of them is totally gone.
Now, McGilvray and what, Weber?
And Weber.
Okay. I'll let...
It's about to, like, the other one breaks as well.
Yeah, I'll let Public Works know. Are you talking about our street sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Moving on to our Community and Economic Development Director, Dan Ritter. Good evening, Dan.
Hi, I have one item here to approve an ordinance amending Section 5-08-180, premises, hours of business, Chapter 5.08, alcoholic beverages of Title V, business licenses and regulations of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Do you want me to do a little background on it?
This was discussed at the 22nd work session also. If you just want to give us a little, the basics, and then we'll ask for a motion.
Yeah, this was from the previous work session. It's really looking at two, two items related to the liquor license. One is kind of the overall restaurant Class H closing time, so allowing restaurants to stay open and serving liquor until midnight. And then the second part was to change our Sunday hours to allow for earlier serving hours. That would change that from 10:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Really, the goal here is just to kind of give a little bit of flexibility to both our existing businesses as well as businesses we're trying to attract here to Crest Hill. And we found those signs to be a lot more standard with, one, the surrounding communities, but also the types of businesses we want to see here in Crest Hill. So our hope is this will help attract people, new businesses, as well as people to dine, eat, drink, and watch sports, go golfing, and do more stuff here in Crest Hill, spend their money here in Crest Hill. So it's just one step in trying to provide a little more flexibility as we look to attract different development and businesses here.
So moved as presented.
Second, but... On page 69, item 6, it would be under number 5. It says same opening and closing house. I believe that should be ours, not house. Am I correct? That should be ours?
You said page 69, which letter?
Number 5, the first line.
Yes, it should not be house. That's a script mirror there. Thank you for catching it.
Well, you know, it's been my duty for many years.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin for approval of an ordinance amending Section 5.08.180, premises, premiseses, hours of business of Chapter 5.08, alcoholic beverages of Title V, business licenses and regulations of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances. Questions or comments?
I just want to commend you on this for doing this. We overdue in Crest Hill.
Thank you.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Joe Kowal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sepiti?
Yes.
And Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance 2033.
Besides that, just a quick trip, a quick update on QuickTrip is that there is no real update. We're still waiting on IED. So we did reach out to them, they did respond again, but we're still waiting on them to finish the review. They didn't give us a specific time, so we're checking in every once in a while. And hopefully, we'll get something back from them on that. It's been another couple months now. Besides that, I'll send out information on Will County Center for Economic Development. Sent out elected officials training. I don't know if anybody here's ever done it. It really kind of walks through kind of some of the base level economic development tools that different communities have. So I've done it a couple times, but I will also attend here if anybody else is attending. It's in Frankfurt, I believe, October 29th on a Wednesday. I'll send out information on that to everybody, but if anybody wants to attend, just let me know. It's free. We're pretty active participants in Will County CED, so...
October what?
I believe October 29th. Whatever that Wednesday, yes, October 29th on Wednesday. It's like 7:30 to 11:30 during the day, so... Let me know if anybody wants to attend that. You can just email me when I email that out to everybody. That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, and in regards to the ordinance with the liquor hours, I will work with Maribel tomorrow and Wednesday. We'll get a letter out by the end of the week to every one of the liquor license holders. I believe there's about 40 or 41 right now. So we'll let everybody know the changes, and that is going to be effective immediately.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get that out to everybody as soon as possible. I know that Park District's also itching to
Yes.
get, get the ordinance. And we'll send some people that may even need the ordinance just to get their gaming hours adjusted. Since the state kind of tightly controls that. So we'll get everything out and work with all the businesses. And then promote that a little bit to some brokers in town as well. Just so businesses that are looking to locate here know where current rules are.
Okay, any questions of economic and community development?
No, just a quick comment. Dan, I just got a text from Mr. Serna for Sopranos, looking to open on Wednesday.
Who, who's that?
Sopranos, looking to open on Wednesday, so you might want to reach out to him.
Okay, I'll do that. And sometimes I want to do kind of a soft open, but I'll reach out to him and see when he wants to do.
Well, he's not doing ribbon car, but he's going to open, it looks like.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Moving on to our police chief, Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I did not have any agenda items this evening. I just want to remind everyone that our trick-or-treat hours are going to be from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM this year, just like last year. We're going to be out and be very visible during that time and handing out stuff to the kids as well, but looking forward to it.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm going to stop this time.
I bought my full-size candy bars. You're good.
Absolutely. And I also want to thank McDonald's. Last week, we did our first, well, second, I guess, coffee with a cop. They hosted it for us. It was kind of a quick thing we put together, but it was very enjoyable. A lot of people came out and talked, and we got to know a lot of people. And I met a couple people, residents I'm going to go have lunch with, so it's kind of neat to connect like that. Very, very good time, and they were very gracious, so just wanted to...
Was the Hamburglar there?
No, no. We did eat donuts there, though. Go figure.
From Dunkin'?
That's all I got. Thank you.
Well, just a comment in regards to the Crest Hill Police Association Golf Outing on September 29th. Hats off to Dave Reviss and his wife Shelley for all the work that they did. It was a great event. They raised a lot of money for a lot of needy people that need those services. And it was a good day. It was a beautiful weather day. It's a tough course, though. But hats off to everybody, and I know he had a lot of help from the police department also
Yeah.
that helped him with everything, getting the prizes and everything. So hats off to the whole police department for what they did.
I'll pass that along.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, a couple things. Thanks for moving that speed car. I appreciate that. Can you give us the total citations for Nap Street by Willow Falls?
You want them now?
No, no, right, yeah, right now, no. If you can send an email and CC that one present as well.
She wants total for the year, or when she...
No, for like, since we've reached out to you, like, what's going on, since you put that one sign. Since you put that one sign?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to have an idea of what's going on there.
So, so typically, as we talked before, when we put the sign out, sometimes we will really do enforcement after the sign is gone. It's kind of like a, just kind of a heads up to the residents, people pass through that, hey, slow down. They can't say they weren't warned, and then we go back in there and do that. So I, I will get that number for you, though.
Okay, so it's gonna be like after?
Yeah, it's typically after, yes.
I mean, unless they're just on patrol and they say, you know, on, if they're doing self-initiated
activity, there may be some citations and stuff as well.
And, uh, the coffee thing, are you considering, like, um, next time, like, doing it to another local, um, like McDonald's, obviously it's a corporation, so they have a lot of money? Are you gonna be able to host, like, in some of, like, uh, Summer Se or Cafe de Casa that they need that help?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It would be good to, to promote their businesses as well?
Yeah, absolutely. What I, I was also thinking maybe doing it here and then having the companies, if they had the time to come here.
Awesome.
So we get them all here at once, maybe we could do that, too.
That would be awesome.
I don't know the logistics and how that would work, but yes, absolutely, we were thinking of that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
My chief?
Yes, sir.
I had some residents kind of tech me about Hosmer Avenue over there by Inner Circle. Is there any way, like, when kids get off school and people are getting off of work, if we could beef up the patrol? I guess there's beef with Stevie, because that's a long stretch there on Hosmer with no stop sign at Inner.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Roll.
Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the Mayor's report. I have a for you approval of road closure for Chaney-Monji Halloween Parade. Uh, we did speak about this at the last work session from Superintendent Andy Siegfried. They've been doing this for probably thirty years. So it's going to be on Friday, October thirty-first, at one PM. They do a parade around the neighborhood, so they'll be looking from, for some assistance from our Public Works Department and our Police Department for some traffic control and road closures. And this is from kindergarten to eighth grade. Um, weather, depending on the weather, um, they usually last about thirty minutes, so I'd be asking for approval of the road closures according to the map that was discussed on the twenty-second.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Person Overland for the approval of the road closure for the Chaney-Monji Halloween Parade held on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, at one o'clock PM. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
And Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Okay, that's the only agenda item that I have. Um, in the last three weeks, though, we did have several celebrations and ribbon cutting, so I'd just like to go through them and make everyone aware of the new businesses in the city of Crest Hill. Uh, the first one was held on September eighteenth for the CFX Boxing Gym that is in the Hillcrest Shopping Center, which is attached, actually, they're part of the Fitness Center that is there, uh, in the Hillcrest Shopping Center. Uh, that was a grand opening between the city of Crest Hill and the Joliet Regional Chamber of Commerce. Jen Howard and Mike Paone and several of the Joliet, uh, Chamber business people were at that, um, open house and ribbon cutting that we had there. So we want to wish them the best of luck. I believe that is the first time that we have a, have a boxing gym in the city of Crest Hill. And again, that's another organization that will keep a lot of the younger children who are interested in the sport of boxing off the streets and give them something to do, um, during their hours away from school. So we wish them the best of luck. Uh, then on September twentieth, we were at, uh, the fifteenth, fifteenth year anniversary of Window World on Caton Farm Road. Our Treasurer, Jamie Malloy, City Clerk Christopher Shay Hall was there. Um, again, we were at the, we were at that opening fifteen years ago when they had about one-eighth of that building. Now they have the whole building. They're doing a fantastic business. They had plenty of items for the kids. Um, they had petting zoos and pony rides and food and everything else. So, uh, they, they did a fantastic job there also. We want to congratulate them on their fifteen-year anniversary and many more to come, and Brian, uh, does a fantastic job. He's a very family-orientated business there also. We then went over to Mr. Auto Care, later that afternoon. Uh, Christopher Shay Hall was there also. That is located at twenty-four, twenty-four Plainfield Road. It's, uh, the same strip mall, which at the opposite end is Urban Kitchen. That is Chris Maycooth. I will tell you, that was one of the cleanest automotive floors that I've ever seen, uh, anywhere. Um, you could literally eat off the floor, so, um, he's a young person that has a lot of ambition, so I would suggest if you'd like to try him out, um, it looks like he is a very thoughtful and considerate individual, so hopefully he can, uh, get a lot of business in that area also. And then the last one was yesterday, the Lockport Township Fire Protection District had their annual open house. There had to be over five hundred individuals there, between children, families, just everybody. It was a beautiful day. They had the helicopter there, they had demonstrations throughout the day, there was free food all day. Um, it was quite an event. Um, October is, um, Fire Prevention Month, so I would, uh, highly recommend individuals that they do have escape plans in case of a fire in their home, have that ready for any type of emergency that would happen. And, um, again, like I said, it was, I think that was the largest crowd that I've ever seen at that open house. They do a fantastic job there, and the kids get to go into the fire engines, the ambulances, and everything else, so it's, it's good PR for the city of Crest Hill, for the fire department, and for the families. So that's all I have. If there's any questions, I'll try to entertain them. Hearing none, we will move on to our City Clerk's report, Christine Verchay-Hall. Chris?
Thank you. Good evening. Um, the only thing I have is the announcement of the Free Community Shred Event between the city of Crest Hill and Lockport Township Government. It will be held Saturday, October twenty-fifth, from nine AM to eleven AM. It'll be held at the city of Crest Hill parking lot, which is the front lot here, and we have a, a limit of four boxes, and that's all I have for your part.
Okay, questions of City Clerk? All right, thanks, Chris. Moving on to our City Treasurer's report, our Treasurer, Jamie Malloy. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. First up, I have the approval of the sales tax incentive rebate, calendar year twenty-twenty-four payment to Food for Less for thirty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-two cents.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Uh, yes.
Tina Overland?
Are we doing the list of bills or just this?
No, just the pets.
Oh, that was my fault. My fault for the approval of sales tax incentive rebate, calendar year two thousand twenty-four payment to Food for Less for thirty-nine thousand, six hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. That was my error.
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
And Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. And then I have approval of the list of bills issued through October seventh, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills. Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment, um, I've never used to make a motion on listed bills in the past, so, just for the record, it's not personal. You guys can go and look at all the meetings, I never make a motion.
Roll call, please, Chris.
Claudia Gazal?
There's a problem down there?
He couldn't hear you.
I couldn't understand.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Roll call, Claudia Gazal.
Epstein.
Thank you. Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
What was that?
Oh, okay, yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
And then just for information, we have regular overtime payroll from September seventh, twenty-twenty-five, to September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-four cents. And finally, the additional payroll for the police retention program funded with a grant from the state of Illinois in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And that will be all for me.
Okay. Any questions, uh, City Treasurer?
No, I have a question for, um, Finance Manager. Um, we talked today about the land item that you have here for the invoices for the pizza?
Yes.
That was three hundred and sixteen dollars and nineteen cents?
Yes.
And just for the record, you explained that this was, um-
For the volunteers at, um, Neighbor's Night Out.
Correct. And for the record, you're moving this into its own land item, and I'm hoping you guys do that.
Yes.
That's for the treasurer as well, because to me, it doesn't show who is coming from, who paid it, why it's being paid, and it is, is one line item is like, just like the event committee. We have a, a committee, whatever we're gonna use, it will go under the events committee, and I'm hoping that any expenditures for the night out, it will be the same thing, or for, for whatever, it just, so we don't have to keep asking questions about who's spending what.
We can take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda. Anyone? New business? Anybody?
Mayor, I got, I got one quick thing.
Okay.
Um, I believe Blaine sent out an email today to everybody in regards to a new site for construction projects.
Yes.
Um, you guys can please check that out this week, kind of look through it, um, provide any comments or feedback. Would like to try to make this active. It's to help give the residents a lot more information on projects as they move through.